Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our Public Works update. And we will be fully staffed in a moment. Now we're good to go.
Good afternoon, commissioners, members of the public. Savannah Clement, Deputy Director of Public Services. We do have an executive session today. We have people on hold waiting for that. So if we could start with that, that would be great. The executive session item is potential litigation.
Potential litigation?
Correct.
And you, that sounds like 15 minutes?
Let's do 10. I think 10 is okay.
So we will go into executive session for 10 minutes. That executive session will begin in about a minute then. That'll give us time to make it into the room. We will come back to
And and it's to discuss potential litigation?
Yes.
Correct.
Well Savannah, you get the award. We're back. No decisions were made in executive session. Savannah gets the award for having picked the correct number.
Okay, so we're going to move on to our regularly scheduled items. So we have public works items. I didn't identify myself, I apologize. I'm Susan Eugenous, the county engineer. So the exciting news is our chip seal program is kicking off early. It's kicking off next Monday on June 10th and we're starting in the Longview area roads. I'm going to wrap this into our construction program updates. It's more for public information. So as part of our ongoing efforts to get information out there during our chip seal and our construction programs, there is a, excuse me, a construction map online that you can access on the website. You can access it two ways. When you open up the county website, there's a button down towards the bottom that looks like a little construction worker and you tap the construction worker and there's a link in there to Calitz County Public Works Construction Map. And you can pull up the map and we will be updating that weekly with what roads we're working on. It'll show you chip seal. When the overlay program kicks off, it'll show the overlay program and our active construction projects. In addition to that, we will be releasing notices every week, generally on Fridays. We'll know what we've accomplished that week and where we're moving the next week. And that is they are always up on our Facebook page and that will include the link to the map. So we're hoping that people start using that map and can give us observations, comments on how we can improve it in the next years because this is our first year rolling it out. So we're kind of excited over this new GIS function we're doing.
Yeah, that's kind of interesting. Is it, I'm thinking about the AI that is sold as AI around and it's very handy to just get up and just say, is there a road closure in Longview this week? And just have it come and answer you. We're not quite there though, are we?
No, we're not quite there, but we are moving our mapping. So every year at the beginning of, so in January, our GIS person will map what roads we're going to do and she'll show it as 2020, this year, 2024 projects. And then when we know what week we're doing them, she just has to go and change one number in that link and it'll turn it as showing active. And then when it's completed, turn it off to complete it.
I would add that AI could pick it up if it's on our website and our Facebook posting. So I mean, it could possibly, if you were to wake up and ask your phone that through Copilot or Google AI, could answer that.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of potential there. It's still a little bit in the future. We've got some catching up to do here and there on some issues, but I do look forward to that.
Yeah. I am a little curious. When you say you're going to be sending out notices, do you automatically send to AMR, the ambulance service and the two community bus services, school buses and River City Transit?
That's a great question. Our press releases would normally include local transportation. I would have to check on AMR. I'm not 100% sure, but if not, that's a great suggestion to include in our press release distribution list, especially for transportation projects. One other thing that we've been doing that we did a couple of months ago, you may have noticed around the county, we've started posting signs on specific roads, specifically highly traveled roads or that we're doing chip seal that there this summer. So we've also got physical signs posted for those people who don't maybe go online or maybe don't read the paper. So.
I would imagine since the school buses get going about five in the morning, that that's before they might normally look. So it shouldn't be that that difficult just to add them onto your link, your list of folks.
School buses leave the deep.
Well, they start going, going on their routes or.
Yeah, and normally we wouldn't start this soon, but as Susan mentioned, we've started a little bit earlier and school still is in session. Normally it's July.
This week, yeah, this week. So that's true. Yeah. Maybe scratch that school thing.
Well, next, next week, school's around still. So.
Yeah, that's right. It's amazing when you've been retired as long as I have, you forget these details.
Well Savannah and I still have kids in school, so we know when they're in. Our kids are counting down.
Yes, yes. Oh, so are the teachers.
Yes. So the other public works item is trying to have an update to, we are still working through the private roads. We have a work session with BPAC this Thursday at two. So we've added an extra meeting with BPAC every month so that we can work on the private roads.
There, there seems to be a little complexity there between whether private roads should be with building and planning or private roads should be with public works.
Yes.
Do you have a strong feeling? You don't have to, just say yes or no.
So I'm going to give the, that depends. If private roads are going to become public roads, then at some point in time, then it should be with public works. If private roads are never going to become public works, I'm more ambivalent and it could go either way.
Good. I, I, I think I see it the same way. The question though is you never know, never.
Correct.
And we are used to people trying to get by with the less expensive formulation of the road and then saying, oh, by the way, can the county take it over? And I don't know what the legal protections we have and whether a private road can have a disclosure statement on it that says absolutely it'll cost you this much more or, or you know, some such thing.
I don't know if there would be a way to do that, if it would cost you this much more. So different states and different countries have different rules on private roads. One of the main things is, is it gated? Is it truly a road that people cannot access besides those who live there or have access rights to it? And so that has become in other locations, a sticking point where it's not gated and closed off. So that if I was on a Sunday drive and I decided to drive it, there's nothing to stop me. So that, that has been the, in other areas. To my knowledge, it's never been tried in Washington state, but I know in other areas it has been tried. And there are rules about how, when it can be considered a private road. And a lot of it comes to, is it shut off regularly? And the definition of regularly is very broad. Is it shut off regularly from people who don't have the legal access?
There are a lot of private roads around here, a lot. I know of at least one where you can drive any citizen at the county with a car drives on the private road. And so I don't think there are many that have the gates. Some do.
There are some that are gated. I know of at least two off of headquarters that are gated. And I think there's one, another one up in the Toodle area that I can think of that I know are gated, but I know most of them are not gated. And just to give you a scale of how many miles of private road we have, we have 524 miles of public road and over 200 miles of private.
Pretty sizable.
And growing.
So I, I know of one, one situation in the valley between Columbia Heights and Beacon Hill. There is a road, a private road called Cedar Brook, which goes down the hill. And in fact, is that neighborhood is adjacent to the Cedar Brook subdivision, whose main street ironically is West Cedar, West Beacon Hill Drive. As if there is actually a connection to Beacon Hill, but nevertheless, Cedar Brook was opened up to make emergency access available. And it's an open road. It's private. It's in really bad shape. And the county keeps, I think, what I've been told is that there are new lots being continually added to that area. And nobody is maintaining it, from what I understand. That's somehow there's, there's got to be a way of enforcing if this is serving a public need for emergency access, it ought to be on a private road. It shouldn't, there shouldn't be a threat to the emergency vehicles not being able to get up because of potholes and deteriorating condition. I don't know how, if you're familiar with, with that.
I know the area.
I think the road is actually, is literally on a, on a private, it's, it's not on a dedicated easement. It's privately owned by the developer, I guess.
Yes. And there's not a whole lot we can, we as public works can do. Once you're off of public right of way, there's not a whole lot. I don't have any authority to go in there. I do know that there is at least, I believe there's at least one private bridge that the emergency services will not go across.
That, that's out in Rose Valley, isn't it?
Hmm, the one I'm thinking of is on Kalama River Road.
The one I'm thinking of is the one out on Rose Valley as well.
Yeah, there's one out on Rose Valley that I'm 50/50 on. They might take an ambulance over, but I don't think they'd take a fire truck. So yes, there are situations that they just don't, won't travel on them.
Yeah, I think we're going to end up having to decide something on that. It's pretty, pretty complicated in the sense that there are always going to be strange situations where we will not handle it unless we force everybody into the same mold. Don't think I would personally be inclined to do that, but I know that you faced a situation in particular. This now, two sections of county road and all of a sudden in the middle, there's a, a private road. But that's a pathological case, I hope.
There's a lot of private roads that go directly off the end of public roads that if you extended them another quarter of mile, they'd hook up to another public road, but they never lay them out that way because then they, you get in those situations. There are a lot of older private roads where they don't have strong road, road maintenance agreements. So they never get maintained. You have other private roads that do have agreements, but it's hard for a homeowner's association to get a reluctant or multiple reluctant participants to.
In my experience, it's the first generation of owners in a subdivision that are enthusiastic about homeowners. They contribute everything, but when they start selling off, the second, third owners don't have that connection and it's just an extra expense. And why am I paying this? I don't have to pay it. I'm not going to. And that, that's, that's the whole problem. That's, that's the real disadvantage of having homeowner's associations and those kinds of extensive public roads.
Yes.
But we also live in an area that has, in a county that has a lot of rural areas. And the only way that people are going to be able to live in the peace and quiet of a nice area out, out in the countryside is to have a pretty low cost road because they live 1,500 feet off the main drag. And that's also cost prohibitive. So it's, it is, it is a conundrum. The problem happens when that original owner decides to subdivide, further subdivide along that 1,500 foot road that worked fine for one household, but when you put eight or 10, then you've got a problem. And they do it in such a way that they never go before planning review. I don't know what the solution is. I mean, there, there are laws that say you can't do that. You can't do that. That's what do they call it? Cumulative subdivision. But I think we have examples of that happening all the time. And there's no recourse. The county doesn't own the property, so they can't, they can't go back. And we can't give, gift of public funds for private road maintenance.
How, how does the county decide to put in a county road?
So there, so our old roads, our original roads were brought, were old logging roads, wagon trails, whatever they were. They were brought forth by the property owners. They petitioned the board. And current owners could do this too. Petition the board to accept the roadway into the public road system. When that is brought to the board, the board hands it on to the county engineer who does a report. And then it comes back to the board for a public hearing as to whether that roadway is going to be accepted. And all those people along that roadway dedicate the easement to the county.
Wouldn't that mechanism apply here?
If they want it to, they could do that. One of the more modern ways we do it is during subdivision, when they are subdividing up, they dedicate public roads as part of the subdivision. So that is how we see our new roads currently is generally in the subdivision process. I do not know of a petition that has been brought to the board. I can't remember one being brought to the board. Do you remember one, Commissioner Weber?
No.
So.
And I'm thinking on the evolutionary scale where it said there are a number of situations where it's private, but then all of a sudden it could be extended another 200 yards and it'd be in it. Is there language that says if you have access from both ends that it's onto a county road, then you must, I mean, I, I would think that there are things you can do to narrow it.
Yeah. So if you look at Clark County's and Lewis County's private road ordinances, Clark County Planning under GMA has a transportation plan where they have, show their major corridors. So if you're on one of what they're considering a future major corridor and you're developing, you have to develop it to and through your parcel. Because a lot of times when it's, if you go another 500 feet, 200 feet, it's generally there's one big parcel and then there's a small parcel in between them and the next roadway. So they're like, well, we don't touch the roadway, so that rule doesn't apply to us. So you, that's why the transportation plan that the GMA counties do helps keep the orderly development.
The past.
Yes. It won't solve the old problems, but it can solve forward.
In the past, private roads were in building and planning, right? And then they got moved to public works.
Yes.
If it were to go back to building and planning, and at some point, building and planning has to work with public works and say, they're petitioning a private road here, but I think it really means by some criteria, it should be public road. So there's still going to be cooperation and all that kind of conversation.
Yes. And that, that is something that could be addressed in SEPA. If it's, if it's a division, something that triggers SEPA. See, and that's where the boundary line adjustments and some of those ways that these roads come about, they never trigger SEPA and so that doesn't get addressed. But the SEPA process is one of the ways that that can be addressed.
So probably one of the best examples of how it can get out of control is Walker Road. Because there must be 200 families on, on a private road. Just keeps getting extended and it's quite an interesting network of dead ends all connected by a private road. And it's not in very good shape and it's, and in fact, it, it couldn't be retroactively made to fit without extensive cutting down trees and, and you know, it twists and turns and it gets narrow.
I've had scary, I've had scary experiences on that road. That's why I'm nodding.
But like in that case, you're going to have to essentially grind the old road out, right? And put new.
It's all gravel roads. So you would just have to regrade the base, probably put some ditches in.
It's all gravel?
It's all, most of it's all gravel. Yeah.
So drainage is pretty atrocious. So the mud puddles are bigger than puddles?
Yeah.
But, but the challenge then is we could probably figure out a program to pave and upgrade and put the drainage in, but should Joe Q. Public pay for that? Or do the property owners, whose property values will go up when they get a decent roads, shouldn't they pay for it? And that's always the struggle that we have on who should pay for the roads.
Apparently we can't even get them out of their own volition to maintain their own road.
Yeah. With, without the, like the HOAs in place or the agreements, maintenance agreements. We do have the LIDs and RIDs, the RID is road improvement, but LID is. We do have the LIDs and RIDs, the RID is road improvement, but LID is local improvement. Local improvement, two programs. And we just finished the last one, probably 10 years ago. Is it Basswood? Basewood? Basswood? Where the homeowners paid in yearly taxes essentially to pay back the cost. But they all have to agree. There's a lot of stipulations, but you, like as you mentioned, the newer first generation.
They actually don't all have to agree. There's a percentage. I think it's a sixty percent, which is, you know, I mean, it's, it's a commitment. And the costs have to be related to the future increase in the value of the property. That's, that's kind of the tie in.
And a lot of the public roads, because they've been looked at, my neighborhood, I live on a private road, looked into it and the cost of upgrading it to public road standards was greater than we could assess, than could be assessed, assessed against each parcel. It's kind of a sweet spot. Yes.
So again, it goes back to, these are in rural areas, large lot sizes, meaning you pay for a longer strip of your, of the road. That's what drives those costs up. So that's, you know, the city of Longview has, and they get LIDs all the time for local improvement. People will have a gravelled alleyway down a block and they'll pave it and then everybody kicks in. Sixty percent will agree. There's usually, there's always somebody grumpy about it. But those are also situations where it's already on a public right of way. So you still have the, the challenge of public improvements have to go on public right of way. Who's gonna buy that right of way? In order for the, for the government to, to pave it. And yet on the other hand, part of our job is public safety and public health protection. And at what point does a situation like Walker Road rise to the occasion where the threat to public health and safety requires the government to step in and, and implement it? And I don't, we haven't, we don't have metrics to define that. Nobody's been killed on an accident on Walker Road.
No.
No house is burned to the ground on Walker Road that I, I, I don't think anyway, because fire, fire trucks won't go up there. So, you know, you've got the potential threats, but are they actually happening of people, you know? One of the wonderful things about human beings is we learn how to adapt the, the environment. Which is one of the reasons why Longview is protected by dykes.
Yes.
So in this immense controversy, is Public Works thinking that the private road standards are going to be so strong that they do raise the cost of say a short plat? But it will be assumable by the county at a, at a lesser price in the future?
That is kind of where we're going and that, and the private road standards that I've been working on that I brought you the draft from, they didn't really change. There, there were a few, there was a change on requiring an inspection of an existing pipe. So if you're converting an old logging road, that your engineer certified that it was at good or new condition. So that was a new requirement. I had draw, I had created a new road type for our smaller, like five or six lots that could allow the smaller road. But the, most of the items that I had in there were clarifying what we were already reviewing it to. Because one of the arguments that we always have is what's the design speed of a private road? So that was put down as a standard where it's fifteen or it's twenty, depending on what the speed, on what class of road it was. So it was more, what I was moving forward was the, this is what we're proposing to clarify some of the issues. So that, that is what, where I was leaving it. So I just know that the.
Trying to codify what your, what your, what your practices are.
My practices, yes.
So, so people have a chance to know ahead of time. It's being told they've gone too far.
I was just saying, just for Commissioner Mortensen's kind of question, so will these standards in any way kind of address future maintenance, reducing maintenance costs by being a public road if they were to become public roads later on?
So if, if you had a Class A road, they are basically designed to a low volume rural road county standard. The roadway section is a little smaller than, by smaller, I mean, the rock and the asphalt is a little less than what we'd build. And we don't require your nice shoulders for your walking on your bike on these private roads. But we do require a twenty-four foot wide road and a sixty-foot easement, which is what our goal on our local access roads are in the county. So your neighborhood roads in the county, that, that is what we're going for. Are all of our local access roads to those standards? No, because we have not upgraded all of our local roads. Some of them are eighteen, twenty feet. Some of them are even smaller.
So I'm a little lost on the nomenclature. Class A is the?
The largest classification of private roads serves the most homes. It's required to be paved. As it can serve, currently it can serve up to fifty homes. It's between twenty and fifty homes.
And Class B is lesser?
Less than that. So it can be a gravel road. It's the same width, but it's can be a gravel road. And then Class C is a smaller roadway, even fewer homes, also a gravel road.
And if I'm doing a short plat and I, I want to do a Class C, I'm gonna have a cost for putting in the Class C. How will that cost compare to the Class A? Are we talking twice?
So the Class A, the.
Yeah. And, and the, the, the cost, I, I, I want to separate between construction and then the, the requirement for extra, extra land.
So that all of the classes currently require a sixty-foot easement.
And it's been that way for a while.
It's been that way since the private road ordinance was adopted in seventeen. No, since ninety-nine, 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 two thousand, when they were originally adopted. I can't remember the exact year of when they were adopted.
So it's just a construction cost we're talking about?
Yes. So the big difference, so Class C roads, I believe are twenty-foot wide gravel. Class A roads are twenty-four foot wide with asphalt.
And the price differential, just a factor of two? You know, statistically.
Yeah, about. It's the asphalt cost.
It's mostly the asphalt?
The difference between the two is the asphalt cost.
Not the, not the crushed rock and the, and the screening or anything?
No, because the rock that you're putting down for the roadway is the same type of rock. And it's, so it's the asphalt and then two additional, or four additional feet when you get up to a Class A.
You don't have to have a cloth or something like that under there?
It's not always required. It's recommended, but it's not required that we put down the geotextile separations. It's recommended even on your Class C that you put that down and then put your nice rock on top of it. So if there's lesser rock underneath and it doesn't go up into your good base material.
Yeah. So I, I may be, I may not have it right, since I'm just a city boy. But it seems to me that a lot of the problems happen when you have a sparsely populated neighborhood, maybe one or two served by old logging roads that predate ninety-nine standards. And they want to subdivide. They want to add more traffic to those logging roads. And they don't wanna, they don't wanna have these excessive costs because that road served us well for fifty years.
And it, it's not just those, but it is the boundary line adjustments that we were talking about earlier that are long logging roads that then get sold to private individuals and then they're subdividing and.
Like a, a boundary line adjustment would be a five acre lot being subdivided into two, two and a half acre lots?
No, a bound, so what, what?
Or is it smaller? It's usually smaller.
They, they have these big lots, so like these forty acre lots and they'll break off, let's say ten acres. And then that person, but, and that's done by boundary line adjustment. Then those ten acres, that person wants to subdivide. So it's an old logging road that all of these lots were off of, and now they've been converted to residential. And well, that logging road's been there forever and it served everybody perfectly fine when they were logging. And now I'm buying residential lots and people are often surprised that they are having to bring it up to private roads standards. The best example that has been going on in the past years.
Excuse me. Those kinds of developments that come along a logging road, we call those Walker Roads?
Yes, the, yeah, there is currently one going on in Rose Valley. It's off the end of North Bodine. The name of the road is Bootjack Lane and it was a, it was a warehouse or property that was logged in fifteen approximately. And so then they held through their moratorium and then it was sold off and it was boundary line adjustment. And in the past, two to four years, everybody's been coming in and they're having to adjust this logging road, which has the crazy Y intersections and they're having to bring that up to private road standards. And it's when the person, if you buy a lot and you just build a house, you don't get, oh, you need to do the private road. But if you buy the lot and then you're subdividing it to sell off the five acres to pay for the construction of the house, that's when they get surprised with, oh, the private road's not up to standards. You need to bring it up.
Nobody told me, why are you changing the rules on us?
Yes.
So I'm still trying to get a handle on what a decision might be for a developer of some kind. So I'm assuming that the reason we even have this discussion is because it amounts to the dollars for putting in the road.
Yes.
Otherwise, if it costs the same.
They.
So tell me, what, what's a rule of thumb cost for, per hundred feet, hundred meters? You, you choose.
With asphalt, like a road cost?
A road, yeah.
I, I don't have that cost. I, I would have to work one up because it.
You'd have to kind of figure it out per lot because lots change in size. So the smaller the logging, or the smaller the road is serving bigger lots and the per lot costs are gonna be much, it's gonna be expensive. That's why they keep saying we don't wanna.
And it also depends, it also depends on the logging road, cause some of these logging roads are twelve feet wide and some of them are twenty feet wide.
No, 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 no.
But I know what you're looking, but so that, why, the difference between the twelve foot and the twenty foot is because.
You just told me the construction cost was, was, was the dominant factor. And I'm looking for just the average situation. There always gonna be a pathological case.
And I don't know that cost. I would have to figure it out.
I was under the impression that the reason there was resistance of some kind to going to a Class A was the price. And so if I'm a developer, at the moment, I've gotta get loans, I gotta get stuff. And it's, it's not a per lot basis at this point. I'm just trying to see how much cash do I need?
Like per lane mile or per, per foot, something of that nature.
So one of the other big protests that they have, and it goes to one of Commissioner Weber's comments is, well, it's been working as a logging road. Why do I have to bring in an engineer? That has been one of the big pushbacks that we receive. I don't need an engineer. It's been working fine. So, and then they go back to the engineers also time. So they say the engineers are all busy, so it's gonna take me six weeks at least before they put in their first set for review. So you're costing me months when I could have just subdivided and sold.
That's the Detroit, the diesel engine mentality where they took a gas engine and put it in a Suburban, converted it to diesel. And those engines never worked because they kept on blowing up.
So that, yeah.
Logging road is a logging road. We don't know what purpose they had other than maybe they were in, in the dry season and they're only gonna be there once.
Yes. So in that, so this, these are, that's one of their big pushbacks on having to have it engineered is the timing and the cost for an engineer. When they can just get a contractor to go out there and just build it. Or if I've got a perfectly good logging road, I'm gonna put six inches of gravel down and we're good.
We're still digressing. Between Class A, B and C, you still need the engineer.
Yes. And you needed an A, B and C. Oh, you need it for all classes.
Right.
So.
So there's a development out in, it's called North Lexington. It's right adjacent to McCorkle Creek. In fact, I think McCorkle Creek forms the southern boundary of it. And there are twenty-five homes. I can't, I can't remember exactly the plat, but something like that. I'm assuming those are all dedicated, public right of way roads built to standards. I mean, they look really in good condition.
Yes.
And, and the interesting thing is no homes have been built yet.
Correct. They have not finished their connection. They don't have a connection to four eleven. That their frontage improvements have not been approved by the state, so they need to complete that. I'm fifty fifty as to whether they've completed their requirements with Beacon Hill for their water and sewer installation. And so they need to complete those items in order to finalize the plat in order to start selling lots.
And they can't really sell lots when the interest rates are as high as they are.
So let's, let's move on. That's a good preview of what is gonna clearly be discussed.
Yes.
More heavily. And so you're just, you're presenting what you've got to the BPAC.
So the BPAC, yes, the BPAC, I've given them what I had two meetings ago. And they want to sit down and discuss what they feel should be the standards versus what I've presented. And so we're going to have multiple workshops to work through their comments and have discussions as to why it is. And they'll, they'll give a recommendation of what they want versus probably what I want and.
And, and maybe it'll be dichotomous at BPAC because they're the, the big builders and then there's the not so big builders.
Yes, it might be, but I feel it's pretty strong.
There are the builders who come up from Clark County who have those rules. And, and ours, and our rules are not as stringent or more stringent than Clark.
Well, that depends on who you talk to. So they, they say our private roads are more stringent, but I think that's because we allow more private roads, is my understanding from talking to Clark County. That they, their locations where you can put private roads are much more limited. So.
All right.
And are they driven by their plans?
We will see something possibly. It, it sounds like we're still two, three months away.
Yes. I'd say two, three months, especially since we're hitting summer and so there's potential with lower meetings, so it'll slow down.
Next, next year's construction season.
Yeah, next, and next year's board, maybe.
Okay, next.
We'll get it done before then. Just moving on, so facilities updates, the jury area is coming along. If you recall, the board approved an upgrade to that area and we've been working on that. The glass is already installed and in, we were there yesterday. It looks so much better. The noise is dampered better. TVs are installed and we're working on getting the chairs and plugins, actually I think this weekend. So hopefully we'll have a new area and a new water fountain.
And a beer dispenser.
Not yet.
So this is the jury waiting area.
Correct.
Not the jury rooms.
Not the jury rooms, the waiting area.
Still subject to quarantine when the next epidemic hits.
I hope not. The jury rooms have all been, the ones I've been in, in the back hall have all been pretty, they've been upgraded. They're small, but they had, do have newer carpet and paint and fixtures in the actual meeting rooms.
Of course, the epidemic requires fresh air exchange. Probably haven't gotten that yet.
Right.
That's, that's a different project.
Different project.
Anyway, thanks, thanks for the fresh water supply for the.
Yes. Thanks for, thanks for pointing out the positive. Unfortunately, I actually was going to give the board another update on the HVAC updates from the Hall of Justice before this meeting, but I did not have an opportunity to. I didn't have the information I was waiting for. But I do hope to send another update regarding that this afternoon. Again, follow up from my Friday email. We're having some odd smells on the second floor there at the hall. So I hope to send an email update out this afternoon. The Chaplaincy Building, we have toured twice yesterday. Mike Moss went and met with two board members on the Chaplaincy Board as well as our real estate agent. So that's moving forward. Hopefully we'll have an update next week on where we're at that, on that.
We will see something next week, you said? And that something is?
I don't know that you'll see something. We will have an update.
Oh, I, I just didn't hear that.
That's okay. Yeah. I don't have, I don't know that any documentation or anything will be provided, but we will have an update.
And the sheriff's informed about the potential for additional storage.
Sheriff was on site yesterday. He's one of the board members as well, conveniently, so. Sheriff was on site yesterday. He's one of the board members as well, conveniently, so.
Thanks.
Anything else on facilities before I move on to parks? Okay, parks update Cougar restroom. We went ahead and added to our current contract with Celix so that they would provide cleaning services five days a week during the summer, which was recommended by Alyssa Dunn, who has been cleaning those facilities and then it'll be reduced to two times during the off season. So we're pretty, she's pretty excited about that because it was very time consuming, the drive alone, but tourism is.
Who's the agency doing it?
Celix, which is our current janitorial service.
Okay.
We, so we added to that contract. Which I believe the board approved a couple of weeks ago, but it's been a while. And so that's moving forward. Another update that I don't have on here, Commissioner Weber, excuse me, had asked about the Cowie Man Park and updates on that. And I think really quickly at the end of the meeting last week, but I wanted to officially provide an update. The bathrooms are there and installed. We're just waiting on the ADA complaint ramp before having any kind of formal grand ribbon cutting or opening or anything. So hopefully that's come sooner than later. Anything else on parks?
But they're usable now. If somebody's hiking through there, they could use them.
I have been told they're usable, but I don't know if that's official.
So actually I do have a question on parks and that is, how is the new access to the shooting range coming?
So next week on your agenda, you'll see the official CRP setting up our project number. We are going to utilize, I've been, we've been working with our on-call survey, aerial survey company. So we are getting them lined up to do our survey work for us and we're contacting all the owners along that corridor before we do that. So they don't, you know, public drones, they get nervous. So they, once, once we get the CRP number next week, I have their task order that I can add to the contract. I can issue a notice to proceed. They're anticipating getting the survey done and to the county five weeks from the time that they start. So I'm estimating us having a survey beginning of August and starting on the design.
And again, this is coming off of Burma Road and coming around overland or is it?
Yes, it's coming off of Burma Road and that was one of the discussions we're going to have to have. Maybe you guys can vote on a new name for it. So it's going to tee into Burma Road at the end of Burma Road and run overland over to the right near where the current parking lot is for the gun range. So we're going to tie into that access road to the gun range so that the residents beyond the bad area can then access their lots.
So why wouldn't we just continue, continue it as Toodle Park Road? It's a loop.
If the, we, we could if the spot doesn't give way. So I, I, yeah, that, that is the, do we want to call it something?
Park dead end.
Yeah, then we'll have a, like West Beacon Hill that never touches Beacon Hill. We'd end up with a situation like that.
There would, there would be a certain justice if we named the road after what's his name? That was so adamant that we build the shooting range.
Dick Miller, yeah. That posthumous award. I think, right?
Yeah.
And I'll end parks with an update. We had a Catlin Cemetery cleanup recently with Huntington Middle School. And then we actually last week had a Facebook, I guess, promotion all week that highlighted the Catlin Cemetery. So I think we had a lot of visitors. And we had some visitors also Memorial Day, visiting the cemetery and it was very nicely cleaned up. Thank you to those middle schoolers. And that's been happening since I was in middle school at Huntington. So it's got to be, I don't want to, only five, 10 years ago. No, probably 25 years, so at least. So that's a pretty awesome program. So I just wanted to highlight that. They did a great job out there.
A mere 25 years ago.
What's that?
A mere 25 years ago.
Yes, very short time.
Well, there was a lot of, there, there was a lot of publicity in the nineties about that program getting started. Because it hadn't, it had been ignored for years, years, years.
We actually, my class did a fundraiser to replace a couple of headstones and as like, you know, 13 year olds, we had no idea how much those cost. We thought we were going to replace them all and I think we were able to do like two, but it, it really kickstarted the nineties and it's, it's continued, which is great. So.
I think it's the only, arguably it's the only cemetery that's not that has absolutely no financial basis.
Right, no district.
It's not part of a cemetery district.
It's not. It's purely parks, yeah. And then the last item I have is landfill related. Mike Moss and Sean Rowley are actually up at the landfill right now doing a press tour with TDN and PUD. And so they're thinking there's going to be an article perhaps this weekend in the paper regarding the project up there. So they're up there doing that right now. That is all I have.
Have they contacted you on that?
They have not. I have commented on, on Andre Stepankowski's column on it. He was, he was asking questions about how much of a subsidy, how much it had raised ratepayers' costs. Because it was like $30 million project, where's that money going to come from? Type of thing. Is it going to raise rates?
You willingly and happily pointed out how expensive other other garbage rates are in the rest of the state.
I, I told him, what did I tell him? I said, the PUD is getting it all financed. We, we have a contribution out of the our general fund, which is, which is true. That it shouldn't be an additional cost because we're getting rid of a waste product.
Good answer. That is all we have for public services.
Continuing, so what's a timetable on the PUD arrangement? We're still, still a while away from a real contract, right?
I believe, I don't know if a while away, you know, we definitely do have the larger contract that we're working on continually. I do know that there, the funds that they've received from the federal government, I think have to be obligated by the end of this year. So I believe it's going to start.
Credits disappear.
The tax credits, okay. So we do have to at least spend some of that money perhaps on equipment, materials. But, so I think the contract might move a little bit quicker here in the next couple of months. I primarily have not been working on that. That has been for the most part, Mike and Sean, so. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We we are on miscellaneous. I think someone's anxiously waiting to do miscellaneous.
Does your miscellaneous have anything to do with the handout we got?
It's going to be a tag team between the Director of Finance and the Director of the, of the County Commissioners, AKA the clerk.
Okay, but do they have a hat? Do they all have a hat?
Rick, Rick, Rick hasn't gotten his yet.
But both, both commissioners have their hand up. Okay, Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director.
Kelly Dombrowski, Clerk of the Board.
And we're here to present the, a proposal that we'd like for your consideration so that we can continue on developing this project. And it's titled Callowitz County Cafe.
So the Commissioner's Office is requesting to open and manage a cafe for the administrative building and the Hall of Justice. This is to provide benefits for the employees and the citizens and the jury members over at the Hall of Justice. I'm sorry, I don't have the presentation up because I can't.
No, no, that's fine. But remember that I said anything on there is fair game. You said numerous benefits.
I, I think so, yeah.
So the numerous benefits are?
I'll start with the current situation. So the current situation is administrative building. We only have, our options is the vending machines, which I feel like they are quite expensive, but.
Can you speak a little more into the microphone? Thank you.
The vending machines, which I feel they are they tend to be a little more expensive than purchasing things and I don't know how well used that is. We have space down in that area that is unused, full of equipment. And then there's limited parking for employees in this area. So if you have a chance to leave for lunch, you're limited on finding parking when you come back. So a lot of people have, have issues leaving for lunch. So those are kind of the current situation for the administration building. The Hall of Justice, they do not have anything on site. It's as my understanding when COVID happened, the person who was running the cafe there pulled out and nobody has been in there since. They also have unused equipment and space. It's when you walk into the Hall of Justice, it's on your left. And then there's limited deliverable options for the jury members. So the county is required or they do, I'm not sure what it is, but they do purchase lunches for the jury, jury members when they're in deliberation. So they just don't have a lot of delivery options for them. Our target condition, and this probably is more where it's bringing the numerous positives. We would like to have a fully functioning cafe at the administrative station building and the Hall of Justice. So we would like to sell local food and beverage. We've reached out to a couple of places that are interested, which is the Gifted Kitchen and Red Leaf Coffee. It will bring convenience for the employees and hopefully job satisfaction. I kind of talked about a little bit. The space also building a positive workplace. I need to put my glasses on. Healthier choices for the citizens and the jury members. My understanding is that they are ordering pizza for the jury members now. So this will give them some more options. Also, looking over the past with the cafes, it doesn't seem like we've been able to keep somebody in there for a long period of time. So it's, they get in and then they get fined out. You know, there isn't a lot of business here because we, we are limited on bringing in the public and advertising. So this would give something that's sustainable. We would be able to modify it to be able to meet the needs of the employees and the public and, and have a little more control over it. We plan to budget to just break even, so we wouldn't be making any money and hopefully not losing any money either. We would like to hire two to three part-time employees for this. They would work limited hours from seven to one with a break in there. And to begin with, it would be from a temporary agency because we want to see how this is working. And also we would think about other options if we could for catering for meetings or retirement parties, you know, some of the elected officials and the department heads like to be able to have some food for their employees for special events. So this would be an option that they would be able to use. Do you want to go over the obstacles because there?
Yeah. So some of the obstacles we, we foresee, starting off would be finding part-time employees, some that would be willing. This is a 19 hour a week, 18 to 19 hours. So that's why we're also opting to use an employment agency to start off with as well. Wasted food items, we hope not to have that because of the fact that we would be ordering the day before for, for services, for our services. So we don't anticipate much in the way of wasted food items. These are all prepackaged items that we would be selling. We wouldn't be making anything ourselves. And then we also, of course, we want to break even. The potential obstacle there is our sales don't match up to what we budgeted. And in that case, since it's a pilot program, if we had to, for example, we had to shut down the administrative building because it wasn't performing well, we would be able to do that easily. And, and then the same thing for the Hall of Justice. We don't foresee that, but if we had to, we can make adjustments. And then also another obstacle is that we would probably have to have an interfund, a interfund loan to be established and set up. And I would, I would anticipate it would probably be about $10,000 or less to get us started so that we had enough cash to buy supplies and things like that to get started and to pay the rental, rental agreement on, on a coffee espresso type machinery. Because we believe we have all the machinery that we need. Since we're not cooking, we just need to be able to have refrigeration and cleaning, cleaning space and things like that. Space to store the supplies, which is all ample already. Any questions? And I can go into the financials next.
I think probably the financials we can look at.
Yeah.
That we can pass on at this point. Discussions, Mr. Weber?
So as you know, from the sign that's still downstairs, the last operator worked for Grounds for Opportunity, which is a division of CAP. Have you reached out to them to find out why they left?
I, I haven't.
I have not.
Okay. They, they might, they might provide you with some, some insights. My understanding, since I was on the board and they made the decision to cut the program, it was because there simply was not, there were not enough people using the facilities. So it didn't meet the costs for, for the, the employee.
I don't know if they, if they were, I mean, when I put my model together, I put it together assuming this is not a profit, ma- ma- basically it's not meant to be profit. It's meant to be a, a service. And so I don't know if they were trying to cover any overhead. I did not build anything like that into our budget.
But you made a nest about on how many sandwiches and how many sales you make.
So that's, that's why I'm saying, we'd like to go into this as a pilot program. I think both Kelly and I believe giving it three months, six months to evaluate and we can also evaluate on a daily basis, a weekly basis.
I, I did hear the comments that employees lose their parking spaces. I've yet to be aced out of a parking space at the parking lot I use, which is right across from the church down here. There is space available. They just lose their parking space from the morning. I get that because that, that's why I'm actually down there because I so much less problematic is, is food services at the Hall of Justice, which, which I'm, I would be you know, much more supportive of, of giving that a go. I think it was, it was making money, but I think the you know, the guy was just kind of burned out. It was like a one man operation. He was there all the time.
And, and my model, the Hall of Justice by far, you know, because of the volume, it, it can actually do a little bit better than break even, but.
And he made really good soups.
Yeah. And we're, we're proposing a very limited, limited menu items too, but mostly healthy type options, salads, wraps, soups, some, some various other items. Yeah, so we could, as a pilot, we could do just one location, the Hall of Justice, if that was what the board wanted us to do or, but we felt like doing both locations would help us with all of the overall expenses and organizing of the event and provide services to this building that we just, we don't really have someplace you can walk to even to go to lunch, really not, not really.
Yeah, I, I look at this as an employee initiative and pretty typically you want to honor an employee initiative if you possibly can. I think your caution about this building is correct, just feeling that. But.
The Hall of Justice might be able to subsidize, you know, this building.
Well, I would.
Activities.
I would think if I had a business. I would think if I had a business plan, I would say, plan the Hall of Justice out and then decide three months, six months later, how you might do.
To stand up this one?
See, see how it goes here. There, I think, let's see, you had 138 lunch items, and that just seems terribly ambitious to me, but.
Yeah, I did, when I did my number of items, I did it by, for this building, for example, it's only four days. So it is less.
Oh, that's a whole week's worth of data.
That's a whole week. It's not by day. Yeah, that's a whole week. So like for on a, on a daily basis, it's only about 30.
Yeah.
40 items at most.
I'm okay with going ahead with the Hall of Justice. This means ultimately we'll get a, a plan presented to us and we'll have to make a decision. And I wouldn't want to make a final decision without everybody.
No, I'm, I'm good with that, too.
Does that meet with your approval enough?
Yeah, so, so possibly just start, we're at, we're here today because we would need to start looking at, you know, the leasing of equipment, things like that to, to continue our research and, and also to possibly do the catering type contract.
Right. So I think we, we said that, see how that works out with the Hall of Justice.
Sounds good. Yeah, thank you.
So, so what happens if those, those very busy workers out at Public Services want a cafeteria with catering?
Well, we would, we would put, we would probably put together a pro forma for that and see if it pans out.
On the other hand, I have not heard the requests either, so.
They, the, the people at Public Works are self-conscious. And so they walk over to the Dairy Queen.
They walk to the Dairy, so, yeah.
Yeah.
The good thing about these proposals, both spaces have, like you said, have previously seen had operations. And so there's the space already there. There's some of the equipment already there. And so.
Is there much equipment missing at the Hall of Justice?
For what we need, because we won't be preparing food, we'll only be preparing coffee drinks. There's plenty of refrigeration. There's washing ability, you know, washing and sink ability. That's basically it. And then we need electricity to run the machinery for the coffee machine. And that's about all you really need.
And a, and a microwave for heating up stuff?
Yeah, what, we'll probably, on that one, we'll probably sell a lot less heated items because it's basically going to be grab and go from there because there's no seating area for the Hall of Justice. As opposed to this building, we have some seating area.
You're going to be on the first floor. I thought you were going to serve the jurors upstairs.
No, first floor lobby.
They, they used to provide soups. That was quite a hit back, back in those days.
And that's, that, that just requires electricity, you know, to plug in the, the large kettle machine.
Don't forget the pastries too, the healthful pastries.
Probably not so healthy.
And you didn't ask, you didn't ask.
That's the cafeteria we opened up at Health and Human Services.
You didn't ask the hard question about how do you collect your money?
Yeah, that's one of the things we need to continue to research. We, we do not want to accept, we don't want to be responsible for a lot of cash, cash type operations. It'd probably be card only for debit and credit cards. So. Reduce theft and, and cash over in short.
Yeah, if you eliminate the cash option, it, it saves a lot of other operational costs.
A lot of people are used to that now anyways.
Yeah.
The question is whether you want to do prepaid cards or just.
Yeah, that's something, that's something we can look at to evolve into. We even talked about if we ran it, you know, eventually maybe looking into the option of employees being able to have the option to have a type of credit that may come against their payroll as a payroll deduction. But that, that involves a lot of research and I'm not sure we're, we're not ready for that.
I think they've got to go.
So Kelly, are you going to become an expert on caramel macchiato or something like that? Well, this is a good time for any citizen comments. I don't see very many people on. I'm trying to get used to my glasses. No comments there. Did you have anything else?
No, I, I just wanted to mention that tomorrow afternoon, I will be judging a history-related contest over at Kessler School. They've been, they've been conducting, they've been participating in a program called We the People. So it's about constitutional history. And the kids are giving presentations to demonstrate their understanding. So I'm, I'm pretty excited to see how that works out at the, at the elementary school level. I did a similar program at the high school level the last five or six years I taught, so.
Are you, are you going to do a Nathan Hale example?
No, Nathan Hale was not affected by the US Constitution. He was a revolutionary.
Yeah. However, the Constitution had its origins in rebellion, right?
Right. Yes. So we'll find out, we'll, we'll find out what, what they, what, what they're going to, what the parameters are of their talks.
That's right. You're judging, you're not.
I'm judging, yeah, yeah. And, and the, and the challenge will be for me not to lecture when I'm commenting on their.
You know yourself.
Yeah, I know myself.
Yeah, it's also hard to judge, isn't it? Because most of all of that is second nature to you and you're dealing with somebody who was, how old? Eight, 10, 12?
Right, yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll see.
And of course, our perspectives haven't changed since we were eight years old, right?
Nor has the Constitution. Or the Supreme Court.
Yeah.
And then I will be gone next week for, on family business in Montana.
Oh, you'll be gone, yeah, we're gone next week. So we'll be down to two commissioners again.
Still. I've discovered this county works pretty well with just two commissioners.
Did you, did you look at the agenda for next week and was there anything there that you wish to?
I know that the Wednesday workshop is on animal control.
Right.
And I kind of wish I could be here to listen to how it's turned out with the county's side of the program, but I'll read the minutes.
Or, or the video.
We'll be on the road coming back, so, or the video, yeah, the video.
After the fact.
Yeah, after the fact.
Clerk of the Board, is there anything else we need to do? Well, thank you. In that case, I say we're adjourned and.